You have to report to her that I was not late.
Okay, we'll let her.
It has been. Mostly since my wife.
Stand for an opening prayer.
Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Cameron.
Will you, oh, mics.
Sorry, will you lead us in prayer, Mr. Cameron?
Let us pray.
Ms. Poole, you're fine.
I'm.
You're fine.
Let's pray. My father, we just thank you for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. And I just pray, Lord God, for, for this city, uh, Lord, just your favor that you would continue to bestow it upon us. And, well, just, do you understand wisdom, God, as we make decisions on behalf of this city? And just, uh, thank you for the wisdom you've given. I just pray for this country, Lord, this nation, God, as we go into a season of elections, just to guide and direct us and be with us and just be peaceful. And, uh, as citizens, Lord, work together, be with us tonight and guide and direct us. And all we do is say in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go.
You ready to fight now? Good evening, thank you for being here tonight. I would like to open things up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to something not on the agenda, please approach the podium and you will be given three minutes to speak. State your name and your address.
I'm Earlene Minier, 124 East Brook Street, here in Republic. Most of that is have a quick question, depending on the answer, I'll do some begging, to see if there's any possibility of any more dates for the limb and leaf dump on West Street. Cause I've got, my renters and all have piles of brush behind every house, there's fire hazards everywhere. And it's there and they just keep increasing all the time, so.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that. I do know that we were looking at some more dates, I, uh, we will publicize that through Facebook, so.
Right.
Get on Facebook or check the, uh, website and we'll get those answers. Or the newspaper.
Ryan's like, yeah, newspaper now.
Anyone else wishing to speak about something not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, citizen participation is closed, moving on to the consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or have any comments about items one and two on the consent agenda. Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Boards, commissions and committee schedules, we have a board of adjustments meeting August fourth, twenty twenty-two. Our planning and zoning meeting is August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's been canceled. Did I say that up front? Okay, honestly, guys, I gotta tell you, my boys are at football camp right now and it's a hundred and two degrees and it's a mixed blessing. I'm not there with them because it's a hundred and two degrees, but I was sitting here thinking about, I wonder if they've started yet. So I didn't realize what I've read and not read, so I apologize, totally my bad. Um, I'm gonna try to focus on this now, though. City council is August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two and August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. So we, we've got boom, boom in August. Mike, can we move that around?
So we have that because the tax levy is your call, we do not receive it and by state statute, it is to be done by September first of each year, but we do not receive it from the county until late, almost to the deadline. So it's not something that's being held up by staff, it's always received by us late. And we always have to call a special meeting at the end of August to accommodate it. So we began to change our calendars in August that would allow for us to receive it late from the county so that we could adopt it just under the state statute deadline. So unfortunately, we'd like to have it the beginning of August when we can get it done, but we do not receive it from the county until the last minute.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Moving on to old business and tabled items, specifically number three on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-two by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of a second supplemental STP urban program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the design and right-of-way acquisition on extending the Schuler Creek Trail.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brickner presented last time on this, any updates from the city? Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash forty-two, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, now it's my understanding our computers are, wait, you're nodding yes, are the computers good or bad?
Not good.
All right, so we are not going to be using our computers tonight, we are going to be doing a roll call vote verbally. So we are now going to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item number four on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-three by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately one point three eight acres, located at the thirty-four hundred block of East U.S. Highway sixty from Agricultural AG to General Commercial C two.
Thank you, ma'am, any updates from city? Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash forty-three, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Garlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item number five on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-four by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an engineering services agreement with Olson Incorporated for the planning, design and construction inspection of the highway MM expansion.
Thank you, ma'am, any updates from city? Thank you, sir, any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash forty-four.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-five by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving a special use permit for Jocelyn Properties Arkansas LLC to operate a boat, vehicle and self-storage facility on real property located at thirty-twenty U.S. Highway sixty.
Thank you, ma'am, any updates from the city? Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash forty-five.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Garlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. If we make it through this this smooth the whole time, I'm going to, uh, tell you a story about football camp from last night, it's riveting. Uh, I'm number seven on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-six by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, you see everybody's hurrying to get to the story, I don't blame you. Uh, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately twenty-eight point eight eight acres of property, located at the seventy-two hundred block of West Farm Road one seventy from Agricultural AG and General Commercial C two to Kirkwood Estates Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am, any updates from the city? Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash forty-six.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Epstein.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero to one. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-seven by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of a developer agreement with Republic sixty-three LLC for the continued development of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District.
Thank you, ma'am, any updates from the city? Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash forty-seven, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Garlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike? Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero, moving on to new business, specifically number nine on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-eight by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, madam clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Bill number twenty-one dash sixty-five to authorize execution of revised intergovernmental agreement with Missouri Department of Social Services, Family Support Division for the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program.
Thank you, ma'am, good evening.
Good evening, Kyle Sutton, finance manager for City of Republic. Um, this was just a pretty simple change, uh, this, when this program rolled out last year, we were kinda ahead of the curve. Uh, we got our agreement through really quick. As payments started coming in the spring, they realized on file that the agreement changed between the time that we signed it and then the time of receiving payments. So this is just to clear up, uh, one section that was noted in the agenda where instead of making direct payments, which was in the original ordinance that was passed last fall, um, instead of making direct payments to families, they took that out, so they cannot make direct payments on behalf of the customers. And the only way to enforce that, uh, change was to withhold payments until new agreements were brought back. Um, but it wasn't on any, uh, fault of the city, they did, uh, admit when they found it, they had just not gone through the file. They'd seen we had an agreement on file and they didn't look at the fine print. So this is just to change that one section and then our citizens will be able to receive payments on behalf of the low-income household water assistance program.
How long were payments held up?
Uh, we've had about two months of payments being held up, but it's of no, um, adverse effect to the customers, cause those payments will be made to us. So they just can't write the check to us, so we're not charging any late payments to customers, so we're, you know, it's no fault of their own, so we're not gonna hold that against them.
Are you sure you've captured everybody that's affected by this, so we're not inadvertently giving late fees to somebody that's not their fault?
Yes, yeah, we've, we've, uh, had quite a bit of communication with, uh, the, uh, Department of Social Services, so we've worked that out. We have a list of all the individuals that have payments on the books. Uh, we just can't accept the check for them, uh, until the new agreement gets revised. But, uh, once the new agreement's revised, um, they'll cut us the check, everybody's accounts will be updated and we'll double check for late fees, but we've been pretty thorough that we didn't want anybody to be adversely affected through this.
Very good, questions from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so get with staff before the next meeting if you have any comments or questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to resolutions, item number ten on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash R dash thirty-eight, yeah, you might as well state that. Uh, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with Open Edge Payments LLC for credit card processing services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-eight, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please continue.
Thank you. Uh, so this is just for our, uh, credit card processor, Open Edge. So this is what we use when people go to pay their water bill, they would use Open Edge processing in the background is what computes the payments. Uh, we've used them since twenty eighteen. Uh, we recently reached out and, uh, our agreement has actually recently expired, so we're not bound to use them anymore. Uh, but they did offer us a lower rate, just because our volume of transactions picked up, um, things have changed in the, in the financial environment. So they're able to offer us, uh, a lot better, a lot more competitive rates, uh, that'll save the city about a thousand dollars a month in, uh, in fees that, for the credit card processing. Uh, so by renewing our, uh, our agreement with them, we lock into three years with them. If we leave early, it's a thousand dollar, uh, fine to leave that service early if we do decide to, which we save in about a month of, uh, use. So, uh, it seemed like a good benefit to the city to renew this agreement with Open Edge. We don't have to change our credit card processing terminals or interrupt, uh, any, uh, any of that credit card processing for customers in the city.
Questions from council?
So they're, so they're gonna lock in that rate for three years?
Correct. Yeah, and, uh, we can still go out, uh, yearly and, and, uh, request a new rate analysis. I did confirm that with them and if we did do a new rate analysis, then it would probably, it would just be an extension. So we just keep locking in unless things change on their side. But as of right now, we could go out in a year, we could say, hey, we wanna see if we can get better rates, just in the, uh, just how the financial environment's working. And if there is better rates, we could lock in, but we're still bound to those rates at a minimum, so.
Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, just a general question, who's responsible for those fees now? Is this something the City of Republic pays for, or is this like tacked on to that water bill?
This is something that we cover, so the, the customers, when they would pay their water bill, uh, they would pay it and this is just in the background, what's, uh, what we pay out of a portion of that, uh, to Open Edge to process those payments.
Gotcha, thank you. How was the service over the last three and a half years?
It's been smooth, uh, it's, uh, I wasn't here for the initial setup of it, but since I've been in this role, um, it's pretty routine. We haven't had any hiccups with like any sort of missed payments or not getting payments or anything like that. Uh, usually, uh, you know, if, uh, transactions over the weekend, we'll get those deposited Monday, Tuesday, uh, you know, first day of business. So it's usually transactions from one day post the next. But we use that for our utilities, court, stuff like that, our parks department goes through rec desk, so that's the only credit card payment service that we don't utilize, uh, Open Edge for.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can move this immediately to a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-eight, please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to number eleven on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash R dash thirty-nine, a resolution of the city council awarding the bid for waterline borings at Hankins Farm Industrial Park subdivision to on-site construction. On-site construction, I said that right, right?
Yep.
LLC. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-nine, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Brickner.
Good evening, uh, Garrett Brickner, engineering manager for the city. Um, so this and the next resolution go with the developers' agreement that was previously approved for Hankins Farm. Um, as part of this developers' agreement, the city went out to bid for waterline borings in four locations. Uh, two of those will cross Sawyer Road, two of those will cross the creek that kinda goes through this property. Uh, the city received two bids, the lowest of which was from on-site construction in the amount of ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, this was consistent with what we had estimated it would be around. Um, we are asking for an approximately ten percent increase to that price to cover if there are any overtures, they hit rock in the middle of the road, um, so that we can go up to a hundred and ten thousand, um, without having to come back to council. If it's more than that, we will have to come back to council before approving that change order. Um, the city will initially pay for the, um, borings and then be reimbursed by the developer. So, um, with that, staff is recommending approval and if you have any questions, um, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Brickner? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those wishing to vote in favor of twenty-two dash R dash thirty-nine, please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number twelve, this is twenty-two dash R dash forty, a resolution of the city council awarding, awarding the bid for wastewater infrastructure installation at Hankins Farms Industrial Park subdivision to Hamilton and Dad, Inc. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash forty, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please continue, Mr. Brickner.
Thank you. Um, so similar to the other resolution, um, except this one was for wastewater infrastructure, including approximately twenty-seven hundred linear feet of new gravity sewer, uh, approximately fifteen hundred linear feet of new force main sewer, a new lift station and decommissioning of the existing lift station. Um, uh, this one's a little different, a portion of this will be paid by the city. Um, the city will initially pay it all and the developer will reimburse us for their portion. Uh, the reason we're doing that is because this is, um, overall above and beyond what the developer would typically have to do, um, or what they would be required to do just to make their, um, subdivision work. So, um, the, the extent of the force main and, um, gravity main and the lift station, um, all coincide with a future capital improvement project we have as part of our master plan. So we're gonna go ahead and, um, pay for that, it's about three quarters of the cost of this project. Um, and then, uh, the city went out to bids for this, uh, received two bids, the lowest of which was from Hamilton and Dad in the amount of one million forty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, this was consistent with the estimate. Um, again, we're asking for additional ten percent to cover the cost of any overga, any minor overages, um, which would bring the total not to exceed amount to one million one hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And again, if, if it goes over that, we'll bring it back to you all for approval.
Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify.
Please.
So the funding just for, for the council's benefit, this is coming from the ARPA allocation, so this is not coming out of a fund that will in any way negatively impact the community in any way other than the fun, other funding and other projects we've already committed to?
That is correct, admins mentioned that.
So I've got a question as a follow-up to some of your statements. This goes above and beyond what the contractor would normally be allowed, normally have to do, right? What would a contractor nor, or a developer normally have to do and what are we doing on top of that?
So it's the extent of which, um, they wouldn't have to build, let's say, as big a lift station. They wouldn't have to do as much gravity main, as much force main. Um, this alignment coincides with one of our, uh, capital improvement projects in the future. So, um, that is why we're gonna go ahead and foot the bill for that difference. And like David said, we're paying for that out of our ARPA allocation.
What happens if we decide, ah, we're gonna let us worry about tomorrow, tomorrow? What would happen if we didn't pass this tonight?
Uh, that's a good question.
I'll answer it.
So. Mr. Brickner would be very upset with me, I get it, but just what would happen?
So this is tied to, um, an economic development opportunity that is immediately north of Amazon. So basically what we're creating in the partnership that we're allowing in this is off, offering more economic development and more commercial space. So what would ultimately happen is it would stop that opportunity from happening. So we're actually partnering on the development to create more warehousing and things of that. So what would happen if it was not done? You would not see that project go forward because the capacity is not there to facilitate. So when this originally started, we did not have the capacity in this area and we were actually telling businesses, no. I can specifically remember an interest we had on the, one of those sites and we were fighting against it because it needed so much sewer capacity per day. And so we need to build the capacity larger than what this developer needs to facilitate the adjacent properties, which you don't see around it. So, uh, if it was to not happen, then it pretty much shuts down the development in that corridor. So, and that's not the nuclear option, I'm just telling you to answer your question.
Mr. Nelson? He got used to talking at city council meetings.
Now we gotta, cut him off. Andrew Nelson builds the administrator. Uh, I, I wanted to mention too, uh, the city had allocated, I think it's one point nine, right at two million dollars for this project. So as Garrett stated, it came in at one point one. So there's a surplus of ARPA dollars that we'll come back to this council with, with some other infrastructure projects, uh, related to water, wastewater, to help offset improvements that we need to do and potential rate increases. So I think what we're eyeing is repair and maintenance of several of our water towers. A few of them are ne, in need of repainting, so that's what we're eyeing and we'll probably bring back to the council for consideration.
Thank you. Given my questions, does council have any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of twenty-two dash R dash forty, please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries seven to zero. That ends that part of the show, Mr. Keeling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, um, before I get into my comments, Mr. Keeling, I, I, I just tell everybody not to forget to vote. Next Tuesday, we have a vote, this is not to advocate for the, either side of it. It educates you, but just before we do that, Jared, would you like to give just a quick synopsis of what we're talking about next Tuesday?
Certainly, I've, uh, prepared a couple of things for the people at home, so just so they have something to look at, so. Jared Keeling, Parks and Recreation Director, uh, just a reminder, one week from today is election day, there's a number of primaries, but the Parks and Recreation Department has two very important, uh, sales tax renewals on the ballot. So one of those is for, uh, our operations and the other one's for capital improvement projects. So, uh, the reason we're here today, uh, is for, they, since they expire in two thousand twenty-four, this isn't working, but that's okay. So both of those expire in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, one expires in March, one for operations expires in March of two thousand twenty-four, the capital improvements, thank you, Chris, expires in September of twenty, two thousand twenty-four. Also, the reason we're here today is because we're paying two very large capital improvement projects off. So we pay off the Republic Aquatic Center this year, it's about a four point four million dollar facility. And we pay off the community center next year, uh, it's about a four point four million dollar facility. So those two large capital improvement projects are off the books. We're willing to extend the capital improvement sales tax to take on additional projects. So that's basically, Chris, if you would, for the very last slide, actually. So I just wanted to give everyone, uh, just a chance to look at the ballot language, this is available on Green County's website as well. But we tried to be cr- crystal clear in the ballot language and in all of our messaging. So in question one is, uh, for our operations, the ballot actually explains exactly what it's for to, which I love. We were able to add that language on there. So question one is for our operations, that's to pay for everything from park maintenance to facility maintenance to staffing to insurance, to any other sort of bill you'd ever dream on, just dream of, just to keep our, uh, operations going. Question two is for the capital improvement sales tax, we're looking, eyeing three major projects and those, uh, projects are in no particular order, expansion of the Republic Aquatic Center, a large community event space, farmer's market space at J.R. Martin Park, and finally, a large community park that would host a regional sports complex. So just a reminder to get out and vote next Tuesday, August the second, and that's all I had, sir. And I'll, any questions, I'll entertain those as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jared.
You're welcome.
Jared, let me say this to you and Jennifer, I, I, while I was not completely connected to what was going on at the city, I, I've watched all the, the signs and the work and all the documentation, things that you've done in this effort to educate and to be available, and I think you've done an outstanding job, just like you did a year ago with the public safety measure, as with this one. I love the fact that we write our ballot language clear, that it's not meant to dupe, it's not meant to manipulate. And so I appreciate the work that you've done, I know you're passionate about it, uh, and, uh, I just appreciate the work. I know that it's hard because one of those is an operating expense, uh, tax that affects how you operate. So I know that causes some uneasiness because you've got a lot of great programs and things you do. And I just, I think you've done a fantastic job to communicate and educate the best that you know how, which is like everything else you all do. Have a blast, uh, nothing but, uh, fantastic words and, and compliments of the work, as usual. You guys are just rock stars for how you go about taking care of those things. Councilmember Garlick, welcome to the, uh, welcome to the show. Um, we got a lot of things going on and Councilmember Self, welcome back. Um, you're a glutton for punishment, so when I saw that, I was like, okay. Um, but, um, it's exciting things, it's nice to have a full council seated. Uh, we have a lot of things, I cannot tell you how, how difficult that can be from our, from a staff capacity, making sure you have, uh, a quorum, dealing with the things that are going on, making sure that we're covering everything, having enough eyes on the things that we're working on, so. Um, but yeah, it's great to be back, it's, uh, took a nice break just for, we had a very busy legislative session, um, as those know, and last year, last August, it was just extremely busy, the work that we were doing. But that, that, uh, I think after last August, when we got done with the measure and seeing that we needed a hundred and fifty million dollars to address sewer, a hundred and fifty million dollars to address sewer was another blow, and then we had another ballot measure coming up, and so I just appreciate the work that, uh, that Andrew, standing in and all the staff for covering during that time. But I, uh, uh, as we talked about, I want to talk about Hankins Farm real fast, is really if you ask people, when people ask me what's happened in Republic, I'm going to tell you, it started with development agreements. And we began to partner with these developers to, to have skin in the game, so for us to leverage our ARPA money and to do those things, I just want to again commend this council for looking at the bigger picture, that we have got to be partners in the development. When you look at Whataburger today, Whataburger does not happen without that street that goes in behind it, which was built by our crews, which was done through a development agreement by this council, where the city crews built it and, and Andy's and, and the First Lady of Republic helped secure, uh, Andy's. She, Crystal, if you're watching, I will give you that credit.
Oh, I can assure you, she, she is not watching.
Okay, okay. But, uh, those started with development agreements and those started with staff working in our city and crews building and their, and these folks. So I just want to continue to commend this council for having the foresight to continue to invest with the development community because that is something that is setting us apart and creating the opportunities. So, I just want to, uh, again, thank you for that. But I was gone whenever, uh, the governor signed, was it House Bill, was it ten thirty? Thirty twenty, so I'm backwards, anyway, it's a good number, thirty twenty, which allocated twenty-five million dollars to the City of Republic. Um, we went up there and asked for a hundred million, we were kind of laughed at, you're the group that's up here walking halls asking for a hundred million dollars. But we believe in our projects, we believe in the work that we've done out on MM, we believe that Republic has a lot of momentum, we begin to sell the fact that the, the state's budget has increased by seventeen million dollars a year, I believe, through the growth and development of our own city. So there was a reason why investing in Republic was a smart move and I, there's a lot of people that I, and I want to acknowledge this because this is not a stump speech, but it's very important to me that there were a lot of people that helped us along the way to do that. And there were some that, when dealing in the political realm and nature of going to Jefferson City to ask for a hundred million dollars and to land on twenty-five million, there are some people that had to do some heavy lifting. And back in September and October, when Mr. Nelson and I started these conversations, there was a lot of closed doors, like there's not much we can do. The representative, I, I want to say this, uh, Representative Jared Taylor out of NIXA is the one that stood up for us in the House, he's the NIXA representative. This is not saying that Representative Davidson didn't help us because he came along through the process, but Representative, uh, Taylor helped us immense, immensely in that prop, on the process in the House, as did Representative Trent, who's in Battlefield. I know he's running for office, Representative Taylor is not, but these people were very instrumental into this community to receive twenty-five million dollars. The mayor would laugh and he'd say, David, you keep using the word minimizing the impact to the citizens. But I would estimate, what did we say today, the estimate of twenty-five million dollars is probably a fifteen percent increase to this community that was taken away because of those efforts. But from Representative Riley, Representative Owen, I'm going to miss them all, Fishel, Black, Budget Chair Smith, Vice Budget Chair Deaton, we had face-to-face conversations with them the first day we were in the Capitol. And I credit Representative Taylor for helping us do that. Representative Davidson was very instrumental in getting us into the governor's office and different meetings later on in the process as we were there. So, I can't really highlight one or the other, but I definitely want to make it very clear how much we appreciate the work. And then obviously, um, Jay Watson got involved and made calls for us because he came to visit us at our office and wanted to become involved, but then Senator Huff was absolutely the one that carried it across the line. So he is a Springfield representative on behalf, understanding the regional impact of our growth and development to that wastewater plant. This is not something about, I'll be very clear, this is not about we're growing so fast that we need the capacity. Those that are new, that don't are aware, we signed a compliance agreement from two thousand and eleven with DNR that the city had not complied with. So what we were paying for to sustain our growth and development is to try to comply with an order that was not met from two thousand and eleven. So, to see that our growth and investment, to see these people coming in, but I would tell you, votes aside, I couldn't care less, I, I, I just want to make sure that they're acknowledged, they carried this across the finish line for our citizens because we didn't get the vote. Our job was to go up there, walk the halls and work those things and have those conversations, and I just want to thank them publicly for making sure, because again, if not ballpark, it's fifteen percent increase minimum just to cover that twenty-five million. That being said, we still have twenty-five million dollars more that we have to secure to meet the objective, but as, otherwise, the rates will continue to go up to accommodate the compliance issue. It's not growth layer, we're growing too fast, we got to pay for it, that is not accurate. It's a DNR compliance schedule that we must meet and we're working on those things. Representative Richie Cups, I forgot them, I just want to make sure there were a lot of people that were like, are you at, you're asking for a hundred million? We'll ask for a hundred and fifty next time maybe, I don't know. But, the mayor kept asking, why do you say minimize the impact? What we want to say is, we want to make sure that the cost impact to our citizens, that we continue to find ways, and I assure you, give a little bit of time and Andrew and I will start the process again and we'll be in Jefferson City again as the next legislative sessions, session starts. But I want to thank all of our elected officials that voted yes in support of our measure and, uh, that really believed in the growth and development. And also this council that allowed us, in fact, encouraged us, um, and gave us the resources that we need, the time we needed, and to all the staff that had to cover while we were in Jefferson City, I promise you, there was days that we weren't around, Jared, you guys have carried your own ballot measure. I, I just can't thank everyone that ran the, the community enough, but it was worth twenty-five million dollars and, uh, that's a huge impact, uh, to this community. But, with that, really, I just want to say to, uh, to all of you, it's great to be back, thank you, and again, thank you for serving. If I learned anything by not having enough council members where you're going, are we going to have a quorum tonight? It's just nice to have everyone here and people that are interested in serving this community. Did I miss something? Oh, yeah. And the last thing, I know what we're going to put on the water towers. This is the new logo. Andrew, I want to congratulate you on being selected, ten for the next ten, I know you love this type of attention. I like the look, but I just want to commend you and congratulate you on being recognized in, in the region for the work that you've done. Um, and we know and you know as well as I both, to all of our teammates, we are surrounded by everyone in their stream, every employee that we have, you are the rock stars of the organization. And I know Andrew would gladly replace his picture with any one of the employees that have helped us get to where we're at, and we share those things and he shares that recognition, but congratulations, that is well deserved. And, uh, so yeah, but you don't, we're going to have to give a quarter for your talking to because we're going to never make it, that's all I have, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, sir. Reports from council. Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd just like to voice my appreciation for you, what, what, what Whataburger did today, that, that was a really special event. It, oh, it's kind of sad to see Meeks leave, I don't know, builder, in that, but you, you go over there, we've got Andy's, we've got people putting pickles on chicken, and now we've got Whataburger. So it's, it's one of my favorite corners now and, uh, that was really exciting. I was really taken back by the showing of the Chamber of Commerce and all of the different people that came out to celebrate that today, so that was really special, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Anyone else? Alright, seeing no one else, I'm going to end things with, um, we pulled off something special with this twenty-five million. And you thanked a lot of people, but I'm going to thank you.
No.
And the simple fact of the matter is, you quarterbacked the play and you got it done. When everybody laughed at us, you got it done. So, uh, it was impressive, thank you to everybody else that helped, thank you to Senator Huff. I mean, seriously, it's big, but you were the one that pushed it through and had faith, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Now, real quick, my boys are in fifth and sixth grade. I'm going to tell the story. The, my boys are in fifth and sixth grade and they get to practice together at the Republic Football Camp. The third and fourth and the fifth and sixth get to practice together. My youngest son's a running back, my oldest son's a quarterback, and for the first time ever, last night, I got to see my oldest son complete a pass to my youngest son in a practice. Now, I'm not going to get to watch that again because next year, they're going to be separated again and I'm not going to get to watch it until they're in high school, so I was really excited to get to watch that, and I'm sorry I was up here as my mind was drifting to that, so, uh, don't worry, they practice tomorrow and the next day too, so I'll be there for that. But, I wanted to tell that story, I was really proud, and I asked Alex, my older one, why'd you pass it to Nick, you had all these other options, he's like, I knew he'd catch the ball. It's like, alright, good enough, and he did. So, uh, with that.
Love it.
That is it for tonight, except for executive session.